Okay, we're ready. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Council President Robert J. Sylvia.
Yeah.
Vice President Paul M. Rogers.
Present.
Counselor Terry Flynn. Counselor M. Teresa Santos.
Where'd she go?
She was here.
She's here.
She's here.
Oh, there she is.
You're muted, Teresa.
Counselor Dennis B. Toronto.
Okay.
Muted, Dennis. There you go.
Counselor Barbara Avon Villas.
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas P. Welch III.
Yeah.
We have a forum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in a pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, pursuant to provisions of Article II, Sections 203 of the Town Charter, and in accordance with Sections 4246-2, 4246-3, 4246-4, 4246-5, and 4246-6, North Island General Law, I hereby call a special meeting of the Town Council, and formally consider, discuss, and vote upon the following items of business. Item number one, discussion regarding Paradise Avenue Traffic Studies, signage in the area, and matters related thereto.
Motion to begin said discussion regarding Paradise Avenue Traffic Studies, signage in the area, and matters related thereto.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Teresa's gone again.
She'll be back. But we have, um... We have six people, six people that want to talk tonight. Instead of, we generally allocate three minutes. I think because there are residents down in that area that people will allocate a couple of extra minutes each. Give them each five minutes. So, um... I think, um, I just want to give a little history on this, how we get to where we are today. And this is from my perspective, is that back in the area of 2018, we had some residents, and they, on and off over the years, have been making some requests to do traffic studies down in that area, ask for enforcement down in that area because of the way vehicles were being operated at different speeds in that area. And it's, um, it's certainly an area that's traveled. I mean, if you look at the data that we were given, the summertime data shows an average of 2,100 cars a day travel that road. And even this time of year showing a data of like 1,500 cars a day travel that road. So it's certainly not a unused country road. It's a traveled country road. We had, um, back in 2018, we had, um, the Council Beach Subcommittee. And part of their, uh, part of their, uh, report suggested that we take a look at the traffic on that road. That they thought it was, uh, in need of a study being done, the traffic being taken a look at. We also had, um, the Historic Road Commission, the His State Historic Road Commission, weigh in on it and take a look at it. So that's how we get to where we were. 2018, we awarded through a budget the funding for the study. The study came back, the study was presented to the council, the council voted on it, and then we went to move ahead to implement it. So that's how we ended up where we are. I know a lot of us have received a lot of email communications, phone call communications from residents that live in the area that are concerned about different items. And, um, I think maybe we'll, uh, we'll lead off. If any counselor wants to say anything, I'm going to ask Mr. Hall, our town engineer, to maybe give us a little history of the meetings that he held with the residents in the area. And you, I, I understand, Warren, that you were at those meetings with our Public Works Director?
Yes, Mr. President, that's correct, members of the council. Back... I'm looking for the dates now. We held a public informational meeting on June 4th, 2019, where everybody along the Paradise Avenue, everybody that had frontage on Paradise Avenue was invited to the fire station where we held the meeting. Myself, the Public Works Director, then Tom Lockman was there. The Middletown Fire Chief was in attendance. I believe that was Peter Ferber back in those days. We had representatives from Middletown Police Department. I believe it was Captain Jay Ryan and Park Operation, where we presented the traffic study to the attendees. It was a well-attended meeting. I believe we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 20, 20 or so people show up. We presented the findings, the recommendations of the report, and took feedback from the residents at that time and considered, uh, considered their feedback as we move forward with the project.
Uh, Warren, I don't mean to depose you, but I just a couple of questions I think that's relevant. Were they aware of proposed corrective actions that were going to be taken?
Yes. So the, the presentation by Par Corporation, we had plans, we had the Marco boards, the, uh, everything was presented. We had the, the speed feedback signs, we had the speed tables, we had the proposed signage. All of that was presented at that meeting.
And the actual signage or was represented to the residents at that time? Or did they just say there was going to be signs and then the signs weren't represented in the same way that they are being placed today?
Well, the, the signs that were represented at that meeting were, um, was much more than what, what is actually in the field today. And what happened was when we went to the Scenic Roadways Board, the DOT Scenic Roadways Board, they asked us if we could, um, trim back some of the signs to lessen the impact on the, the viewscapes down there. So as a result of those meetings and the requests by the boards, it was multiple meetings. I think we had three meetings with the Scenic Roadways. We did, we did delete a number of signs. So, so the, the signage that was presented at the meeting was actually more than what we actually put in the field.
Okay, my, um, and thank you for asking that because I was concerned that maybe perhaps we didn't represent accurately what the suggested signage was. But apparently you're telling me it was represented accurately.
I believe it was, yes.
Okay. Okay, we have, um, we have Bob, uh, Par, uh, from Par, Bob Sykes from Par on with us. Bob, are you there?
He's on mute. He, he needs to unmute.
Apologies. Yes, I am here.
Hi, Bob. For the record, your name and address and, uh, your company that you represent, please, and...
Sure.
pertaining to this conversation this evening, please.
Sure. Uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen in the council. My name is, uh, Bob Sykes. I'm the civil engineer with Par Corporation, uh, the consulting firm hired by the town to complete the traffic safety study on, on Paradise Avenue.
Okay, Bob, why don't you walk us through what happened? From the start, were you involved with meeting with the residents?
Yes.
Walk us through what happened.
Sure. Um, so we've, we've completed similar studies throughout the town. We did, we did a study for Third Beach Road, Turner Road, Green End Ave. And I figure we can, you know, we can walk through the, uh, the typical workflow that we advanced through to prepare these studies. So, so typically, we have a kickoff meeting with, with town departments. We meet with police, fire, engineering, and DPW, and solicit feedback from them identifying any areas of concern that, based on resident complaints and public safety observations. Then we work through an independent assessment of the, of the roadways and we develop our recommendations. We then present those recommendations at the public informational meetings to residents, as Warren had indicated, um, using, uh, figures and plans that, that are later advertised and are being constructed now. That, that meeting was on June 4th, as Warren had, had said earlier. And, uh, I believe actually after that, there was also a survey that was sent out to the abutters on July 2nd to solicit additional feedback in regards to the recommendations that were presented within the report. Is there, would you like me to walk through how we developed the report?
I would, I would.
Okay.
I think it's going to give some, uh, history of why we are and how we got to where we are this evening. And then I'm going to have some councils ask questions, and then we'll see if any of the people that wanted to speak this evening have called in to talk. So, but I would.
Sure.
But so, to elaborate as much as we couldn't, be as clear as we could about what happened to how we got to this evening.
Sure. So after meeting with, with the town departments and soliciting the feedback and identifying those areas of concerns, and, uh, we, we work on that independent assessment on the roadway, which includes the completion of a spot, uh, spot speed study first, where we observe vehicle speeds and use the data to determine the vehicle speed percentiles, which are used for deciding, uh, speed-related recommendations. So the metric primarily focused on is the 85th percentile speed. This is the metric used for identifying the speed that majority of drivers feel comfortable operating at along a roadway. Uh, so as, as many factors that, that play into what makes someone feel comfortable driving at a certain speed is also a lot of factors that are considered to determine what the, the posted speed limit for a vehicle to safely travel that road is. So some of these variables, they, they include like the volume of the road, volume of traffic, the width of the road, the use, uh, the pedestrian volumes, driveway spacing. And there's a lot more variable, variables that, that play into, uh, different types of roadways and highways, et cetera. Uh, for Paradise Avenue was identified that the 85th percentile speed was, uh, recorded at about 37 miles per hour, and, uh, the posted speed is actually 25 miles per hour. So this would indicate that, uh, that the observations received and the complaints received from residents regarding the higher vehicular speeds were in fact legitimate, and the recommendations for slowing vehicles would be considered as part of our report. So the, the next step that we worked through is, uh, we review crash data. Uh, so we, we compile crash records provided by the police department and identify locations or intersections along the roadway where concentrations of ser- serious crashes occur. Uh, there were actually, there were 13 crashes that were recorded over the period of March 2015 through March 2018, that three-year period is what we typically observe. Two of those accidents appeared to be speed-related, involving some sort of loss of control. So, and we complete a existing conditions assessment where we review, uh, the compiled information, and then we document physical characteristics of the roadway for review and consideration as part of our recommendations. We use all that information compiled to develop traffic calming recommendations to produce the desired traffic patterns and vehicle speeds along the corridor. The overall intent is to lower vehicle speeds, reduce the high intensity, reduce the risk of high-intensity collisions, and make the roadway safer for residents, pedestrians, and everyday users. We then meet with the town once more where we review our recommendations. And then upon approval of the town, we, we schedule a public informational meeting, like, like Warren had, had mentioned, where we present our recommendations to the abutters and the approach that we take to develop the report and, uh, the overall project. And we also, I think in this case, it was requested that a, a survey be sent out to, so that residents that didn't feel comfortable voicing their support or opposition for the project in public could, could weigh in. As Warren also indicated, we then also presented the project to the state scenic roadway board, where approval was granted after, after several meetings and some, some minor revisions to, to eliminate some of the signage. And then based on the meetings and resident feedback, revisions were made. And based on the majority of the responses, a system of traffic calming measures and safety improvements were then developed and included within the report. Uh, in this case, the major recommendations that were included were the installation of the two speed tables and the two driver feedback signs, one in each direction.
Okay. Bob, thank you very much. Does any council have any questions about? Council Walt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just about the accidents, Bob, you said 13 in that time period. You said 2015, 18 were speed-related. How do you determine what an accident is because somebody calls in and, and files a report or requests police? Do we know anything about the severity or whether or not you can tell that road conditions were a factor?
Yeah, so we, we work with the police department and they provide us with, um, the, the crash reports, which usually has a pretty, just a pretty well-written description, gives us time of day, any weather-related or, or time impacts also.
Understood. So of the 11 that weren't speed-related, can you characterize them as being because of road conditions, I guess is my question?
No, so of the 11 that were not speed-related, they, they were at intersections. And typical collisions and intersections include, uh, like angle collisions or, or rear ends, which are common of intersections is, is an anticipated amount of crashes at intersections. But, um, it, it could be related to a, a number of, of different issues, including sight distance or... But they wouldn't be related specifically to speed.
Thank you.
Vice President?
So, um... Probably going back three weeks, two or three weeks, I received a phone call from a resident down on Paradise. And, and, you know, he wanted to convey his concerns to me about, you know, the, the traffic calming measures that were being implemented down there. So, you know, part of the issue became, once more information became available, I talked to him, I talked to Sean. Tom had talked to, Tom Welch had talked to some residents, and everyone else saw some of the emails. I think part of the issue was, is that, you know, there was, there was that meeting in, I don't know, it was February or June of, of 2019. And then there was a survey sent out. You know, most of the people that attended the meeting, I guess, or all the people that attended the meeting from, from Paradise is my, whatever, was my assumption. Majority of the, the resident, the survey were from Paradise, but other parts of town. Maybe some people that also live in Newport. So I guess where the, where the rub came was that, hey, look, they felt like they needed or were going to get another crack at, you know, from that initial meeting in, in, at the fire station. I don't, I think they were kind of caught off surprise, caught by surprise the fact that, you know, these things are going in. I, I believe, and the people I spoke into from Paradise Avenue, they felt that it wasn't conveyed that these were final and it was going to happen. So I'm sure there's some are in favor, the majority of them that I've spoken to believe that they're excessive. You know, and sometimes when you see things on paper by a plan, right? It might look okay, like a sign, but then when they're implemented and you drive by, I mean, I drive by there, my, my mom's place is down in Green End, I live on Prospect. So, you know, I'm by there three, four times a week. And when I saw these signs, I'm like, you know, these are the highest signs I've ever seen around here. I mean, some of those signs, they gotta be 10, 12 feet in the air at least. And then the fluorescent bicycle signs, you know, share the road that... I mean, I think we all need to know, we need to share the road with bicycles, bicyclists. They're excessive, in my own opinion, never mind what, what the residents have conveyed. So I think, I think what, from what I got out of it, the residents are looking for, um, they want more input. I think they were kind of, you know, the survey says, um, one thing, and the residents are conveying from the meeting at, at, um, the fire station, another thing. So I think we need to resolve this. I think my, my personal feeling should be that there should be another meeting for those residents. And Sean and his, his group were kind enough, the administration were kind enough to, when I called and conveyed this, to, to put a halt to it. Initially, there was some, there was some confusion, and I'll, I'll certainly take that responsibility. I conveyed to Sean that, hey, the residents are upset about the speed humps. And then, um, the ones, at least the ones I talked to, I didn't, I didn't think that the signage was, um, going to... I knew, so Sean said he would, you know, stop the, the work and the speed humps until we had conversation. And here we are. Um, the work continued, the signs, I didn't convey that message to Sean. So I'll take that responsibility for sure. But at, at any rate, there's, this, there's miscommunication, and I think they deserve, certainly deserve another, a shot at more input as to what they're going to have to drive by and look at every day. And, and I think that's, that's the way we, what we should do. That's just my own, my own personal feeling. So that's kind of where at, where, where we are. And then, you know, it's not just Paradise, and you, you go down Green End. When I drive down Green End, I mean, this, three of those bicyclist signs, I mean, one right after the, I think within 200 or 300 feet, there's three of these signs, and they're enormous compared to your, your regular signs, you know, your regular stop signs probably, you know, seven, eight feet high at best. And these things, 10, 12 feet in the air, and they're just, they're very, to me, it's, it's overkill. And I'm over here going like this because of the shape of the sign, I guess. But, um, you know, I, I think it's, uh, I think these residents certainly deserve another crack at, uh... And even if they did see the plan and go, oh, okay, you know, once it's implemented, it's not always what's, what it appears to be on paper sometimes, so.
Hey, thank you. Council Walt?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple more questions for Bob. So that, I agree with Paul, those signs are enormous, and I drive by there every day. I also, uh, I ride a bicycle and I tow a trailer all the time. So I am constantly going past people on Paradise. It's very well-traveled. I understand that. But I think Driver's Ed, when I was 16, also told me that if, uh, there's a bicycle coming at me, that I am to wait until there's a safe way to go around them. I don't think I need those giant signs to tell me to do so. And I, so my question is, the signs that are in place now, was there plans for even more than that, or was that all the signs?
Specifically to, to Paradise?
Yes.
Um, I, I haven't reviewed specifically what's been installed to date. But I would, I'd have to check.
That's fair enough.
I don't know if you could weigh in?
Yeah, I'll weigh in on that. Um, I, I, yes, we did cut back originally. There were more share the road signs. We cut a number of those back at the request of the scenic roads, um, roadways board.
Right, and, and thank you, I understand that. But my question is, after you came to your agreement with the scenic roads board and they said, okay, you, you agreed on X number of signs, are all of those up now? Or are they not all even up yet?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, they're all up.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, uh, the speed, you know, blinking speed sign. I know it says that there's some way to show, I forget, the, the pie graph that shows whether or not the vehicle slowed down or not, uh, based on the sign. So I'm wondering, how do you figure that out? Have you, did you, the, the traffic speed study take place prior to the sign being there? Then you put the sign up and figure out that when it turns on, people slow down? Or you, the thing can just tell from, you know, a quarter mile away that people going 35, they get to the sign, they go in 25, so it worked? How do you determine that?
It's, it's both, actually. So we've done, we did a spot speed study in, in the approximate location. So then you can, that piece of equipment actually compiles data, and we can compare the 85th percentile speed with those measures in place versus before those measures were in place. But it also does do exactly what you had just said, where it, it captures the vehicle speed at a certain distance away, and then also can capture vehicle speed at a closer distance to see what that change in speed was.
Okay, and, um, my, my other, just my own personal here is that those, uh, speed humps, whatever you want to call them, uh, I know they're on Forest Avenue. And, um, I would love to hear what the residents there say because you do have to slow down again, truck and trailer, all the time. So you gotta slow down and go easy over them. But that requires slowing, and then it requires speeding up. And that creates more noise. And I just wonder, how do you pick who gets the thing in front of their house?
Uh, you, in regards to how the, the locations were chosen?
Yes.
So we have to look at the, the whole system holistically, is it, it's a comprehensive system, really, to, to see how to slow vehicles throughout that roadway for, for that, for the safety improvements. For the speed table specifically, the intent is to cite the improvements and locations that had the least amount of impact on the direct abutters. So we, we tried to locate them in, in areas where, uh, there's, there's open space or vacant properties or, or set, homes that are set back with vegetated buffers. But, um, yeah, we, we do our best to, to find appropriate locations.
Understood. So I, lastly, um, not being part of the process, but why wouldn't you increase a, you know, I, I know in the summer, people, I'm on Mitchell, so people do the same thing, flying by to go to the beach on the other way to the golf course. And, um, I know like a Jay Peckums, they'll stick a cruiser in there, and that is tremendous, slowing people down. And you can pull them over when that, you know, nothing's better than a car pulled over with lights flashing. It tells everybody coming either way that, you know, hey, watch out there. They really stick to the speed limit on that street. Why wouldn't we do that instead of putting asphalt speed humps?
The police cruiser is temporary. As soon as the police cruiser is removed, the speed increases again.
But the people, the people that rode by it going to the beach are going to think it's there when they come home. Anyway.
And if you look at studies, it doesn't, the, the presence of the police cruiser, the effect immediately dissipates. Chief Kewer is also on the call, if, you know, to speak to that specifically. But the presence of the police car slows it down. When the police car leaves, it quickly, the, the speed resumes. But again, Chief Kewer is on the line if you want to pull him into the meeting, Mr. President.
What I'd like to do is see if any of the people that requested to speak tonight are on. And I'm going to call your name in the order that you submitted your request. Richard Wallace, Richard, are you on the line?
Is he on, Kevin? I don't see him either.
Cindy Briggs, Cindy, are you on the line?
She is, I believe, Bob.
Cindy Briggs? Okay, let's try, um, do we have it?
Well, there's, there's phone numbers on there, Bob, so I might not necessarily see their name.
Also muted.
And, and that phone number that's on the screen is muted, as Barbara stated, so. It is?
It's muted.
Yeah.
Tell them to hit star six.
Whoever's on the line, um, hit star six, it'll unmute you. Okay, you're unmuted.
Yeah, all right, very good. Um, my name is Cindy Briggs, I'm at 286 Paradise.
Okay.
All right, um, so first of all, I want to kind of just reiterate like what Paul Rodrick said as far as the number of signs, and if they're, the, the ones that are there. I mean, they, like he says, they're big. I think there's a lot that are excessive. I think it takes away from the country charm of the road, which is the whole reason we live there. Because we love the country charm of that, where we don't want to look like West Main Road. And it's just odd to me, too, that it seems like all the signage is from like Prospect Ave South. And there doesn't seem to be, like, if we're sharing the road with the bikes, and this is so important, why are there not more to the northern end of that road? So that's one of my questions. And my other thing was, I just felt as well that, like, what's the harm in trying less drastic measures first? Like, these, these speed tables, to me, it's just excessive. And, and I, and I, I think like, why, if, nothing else, if we just try the flashing signs first and see how that works, see if that slows things down. I just think it would be less drastic measure, and why not try it first? And I know someone said that in the surveys, people said they... And I know someone said that in the surveys, people said they wanted that, but I don't think all people had the input that they wanted. Um, and I know he talked about the location of the, um, speed tables. But my thought again was, there's like two more on the southern end of the road. Wouldn't it have made more sense to put one a little bit, at least maybe north of Prospect, north of like the Crusher pathway for Peckham Brothers? So that you're slowing traffic down before it gets to his roadway and Prospect where people are pulling in and out. Um, so that was just a thought that I had as far as that. And then my other concern is just emergency vehicles. Um, there was some kind of emergency yesterday going down. East Main Road and there was, you know, a lot of vehicles and they weren't going 25 miles an hour. They were going much faster than that. And my concern is, and again, I saw on the, the report that it said that these tables allow emergency vehicles to go down, but I just. Am concerned that, you know, would they be able to get to a, an emergency with the sense of urgency that is needed quite often? If they've got to negotiate these two speed tables and I just didn't know how much input the police chief and the fire chief had. In these decisions as far as these speed tables and what their thoughts had been, because I really didn't see anywhere where that was, um, brought out. Um, and again, like, um, Paul has said, as far as the share the road signs, as far as the bikes go. Especially since COVID, there's been a lot of walking and riding a bikes and, and joggers and I go down that road every day. And, um, people are very, drivers I see, you know, that I follow are all very courteous. If someone's coming the other way, they stop and they wait until it's. Safe to sort of around the walkers and bikers and stuff. I, I really don't see where that's been a real issue and that there's. So much of a need for all these signs. Um, but I do want to thank everybody for taking, having this opportunity to talk to everybody. I appreciate you guys listening to us. I. I do feel like we, I, I know I was not the only one that felt that we were gonna be contacted and have more input and then it just didn't seem to happen. So I appreciate this opportunity to, um, have, say what's on my mind.
Thank you, Cindy. Uh, Chris Greenman, Chris, are you on? Chris, if you're on, can you raise your hand?
He's online, Bob, I can see that.
Chris, if you're online, star six, are you muted? I have no, I have no visibility on this at all.
He, he was on. You got him? Karen's got him.
He's muted. There it is.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. I want to start by expressing my gratitude to President Sylvia for agreeing to tap the brakes on the proposed road alterations. Town council people, Rodericks and Welch for being so responsive to our concerns in the council. And its entirety for putting this meeting together. This is an example of good government. Judging by the radical scope of alterations proposed for Paradise Avenue and promoted by the town engineer and its consultant. We must have a huge speeding problem on Paradise Avenue. If that's the case, I'm really shocked as I walk, ride a bicycle and drive on the street on a daily basis. And I don't see excessive speeding. Through this pandemic, I often walk from the house to Satuus Beach and back. When walking where the road is narrow and there's no opportunity to step off the road due to swales. Vehicles dramatically slow down below the speed limit. As the road is too narrow for cars in opposing directions to pass adjacent to a pedestrian. Drivers and pedestrians seem to be behaving appropriately in my view. I would suggest there are many intermediate steps that could be taken short of what has been proposed that would be effective. I have not witnessed much enforcement via speed traps. I think that would be the first step to try to slow speeders. We could add a sign up by Green End that says strictly enforced under the 25 mile per hour speed limit sign. I often get exercised by riding a road bike around Newport and Middletown. The share the line, share the lane signs painted on the road with an occasional bicycle sign. In Newport gets the point across to drivers to drive carefully, i.e. slowly. And they're not very obtrusive to the visual environment. In Providence, they have cameras with radar around school zones. If a car passes too quickly, they're mailed a ticket along with a photo of their car. I think they're making a lot of money. And I'm sure there are many, there are many other ideas worth consideration. With Newport and Middletown being such popular destinations in the summer. Populations and vehicular traffic increases dramatically. If there's a speeding problem, I suspect it's seasonal. The implementation of all the suggested speed calming measures amounts to punishment of those that live here. Brought on by the seasonal offenses of a few. My wife and I are in the real estate business. I'm convinced the implementation of all these measures would have a negative effect on property values. While desecrating a beautiful country road. Paradise Valley has been treasured for many centuries now. Helena Studevent and John Lafarge painted in this valley. The state of Rhode Island designated Paradise Avenue a scenic roadway in 1993. For us, for us who live on the street, we love living here in the country. It is paradise to us. The alterations proposed are urban solutions that are inappropriate here. Please stop this project completely and let's take a small step to solve a perceived speeding problem. With community input, so as to not desecrate the beautiful fabric and landscape of this historical country road. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Chris Greenman.
Chris, thank you very much. Kate Greenman, Kate, are you with us this evening?
There is a Kate on there, Karen. She needs to raise her hand. It's just a Kate, I know. I'm not, there's two Kates, one's, one's, says the last name, the other one doesn't.
Yeah, Kate Greenman, Kate, if you're on there, if you could raise your hand.
There she is.
But it's muted.
How's that?
There you go, Kate.
Name and address, Kate, thank you.
Technology. I wanted to thank you all too. This is very, um, helpful to all of the residents and we appreciate the work that you do. Um, I'm gonna echo the first two speakers. First. We, when we, I did attend that meeting in June and when we left. I don't think anyone had any idea that what had been planned was a fait accompli. We thought that we were gonna have more input, more explanations and. At least at that meeting, it seemed the majority of the people were all happy about the thought of reducing speed and making pedestrians safe. But we're not necessarily, and actually mostly not at all, happy about speed bumps. Um, so. Whatever perception, the authorities who I know you work hard and I know you're trying to do the right thing. Had, it was a misperception because we did not like the thought of speed bumps at all. So the fact that they're about to be built is a real surprise. So I'm hoping from this meeting, we walk away saying, we're going to have safe solutions. We're going to have safety for pedestrians and motorists and bicycles, but it's not gonna be that solution and we're gonna rethink. With, uh, as Cindy said, more measured approaches instead of going for the overkill. The accidents, I, I was really curious about the accident information and the speed information. Because we got a copy of the speed information and it said the average speed was 29 miles an hour. So that 85% speed and that one of the highest speeds was 113 miles an hour, so that guy was crazy. But, um, that speed. I would love for us to have a better understanding of that data and as my husband said. The day to day, we feel pretty safe and it's the summer people who might be screaming around that corner on Green End. Where the original complaints came from and it does seem like the measures you're taking at Green End are excellent. And should help up at the northern end of the street. So, um, you know, we appreciate that. And I just want to say that yesterday, my brother who lives on Ashurst Avenue had a very serious fire at his house. And the response time for the people who live at the southern end of Paradise and on Eastern's Point is very, very important. And I can't imagine what speed tables are gonna do to those big heavy machines as they're racing to help people. When their house is on fire. So, um, I really hope that you'll seriously consider not putting them up. And then my last hope is the aesthetics and the fact that it, that the council in 1993 worked hard. To get it designated as scenic country road and we'd love to keep it that way. So we think we can compromise with a, a couple of good measures to make it safe, but also. Attractive and those speed bumps are just not attractive. They're not scenic country road measures. And I really hope you all will hear us, the people, and there's a lot more people than people who are on this Zoom. The neighbors have all been emailing each other and talking, who would like to see this handled differently. So again, thank you very much for all the hard work you do and for taking your time tonight.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, Deborah Lee, Deborah? Deborah, if that's you, perfect.
Hi, can you hear me now?
You can. Just, uh, your name and address, please, Deb.
Uh, I'm Deborah Lee. I live at 272 Paradise Avenue and have been here off and on for over 60 years. So the reason, uh, the reason I called, um, and wanted to be part of this is. As Kate had just mentioned, my impression of. The purpose of the meeting that occurred at the Middletown Fire Station, uh, and the. The temperature of it and how we all felt as we left is, um. Totally different than, um, the impression that the town representatives have. Um, so there is a disconnect there and, um. I, I, like I, like she said, I understand they're working hard to try to keep us safe, but. That was definitely not my impression when I left that this plan was to be implemented. As printed on those boards during that meeting. In fact, um, one of the topics that was, came up was the fact that I have a problem. At where my driveway appears to be an extension of Prospect Avenue. And I was asking, you know, about some manner of. Something to make motorists aware that when they come to a stop. That the road goes left or right and not straight, so that they would stop coming in my yard. Um, thinking that they were continuing on the road. And I saw on this plan that there is a timber. Uh, guardrail plan, which I'm concerned about because if it's anything remotely. Like the one that's already installed on Green End Avenue, I'm afraid that the design is way too. Industrial and commercial like a highway off ramp. Uh, that's going to detract from the overall aesthetic of the area and devalue. Um, my property by being plopped there with big, huge. Yellow fluorescent squares all over it. So I have a concern with that. And also have a concern if there's consideration for any other, um. Pathways or sidewalks or anything like that on property that the owners may have to maintain in the winter time if. That is a consideration. My, uh, like or dislike of the speed tables is con- consistent with everybody else that's been spoken already. I'm not a fan. We have them at the university. They do slow traffic down, but aesthetically are an issue and do impact on. Safety vehicles traveling at a high rate of speed. And that is it and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Deb, for taking our time to, uh, give us a call this evening. Andrew Riley, Andrew. Andrew, if you could unmute star six and if you name an address, please.
Hello?
Yes, Andrew, your name and address.
Uh, yep, Andrew Riley, 598 Paradise Ave. Can you hear me okay? Uh, first of all, yeah, first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank, um, all of you on the council. I know, um. You know, you have voluntarily put yourself in, in, uh, this position of service and I, I know what that's like. And I just want to thank you for, uh, your service to the town. You, you put yourself voluntarily in the crosshairs of discussions like this and I, I think it's admirable. And I just want to say, uh, I became more recently, um. Aware of the specifics of the plan, uh, contemplated on Paradise Ave. Uh, and the effort to make it, you know, safer place for people to drive, walk, ride bikes. Uh, my wife was at the June meeting and, you know, gave me feedback that I think is a little more consistent with, uh, folks on the phone that. You know, it's fairly, um, uh, con- contentious from the perspective of the residents of Paradise Ave. And how they felt about, you know, some of the proposed, um, plans. And that it has been a surprise to see that there wasn't any follow-up after people were concerned that. It was just, uh, kind of pressed, uh, forward. And I think, you know, sometimes there can be just kind of some disconnect between, uh, folks and groups like that. So I'm sure there, there could be a, a good explanation of why there was, uh, kind of a disconnect there. But, you know, in order to understand this and, and, um, uh, learn a little bit more, I first reviewed the proposal. Um, for the plans for Paradise Ave, the, the speed humps, the driver feedback signage, static signage, et cetera. And then next I reviewed the, um, study constructed by, uh, conducted by All Traffic Solutions. Uh, during that, you know, most busy time, as we all know, as Paradise Ave residents. Of the Fourth of July week through September, it really, you know, traffic does seem to, um, go up quite a bit. And from the numbers I just heard earlier, there's, uh, you know, what, 2,100 cars potentially. Um, or on an average volume per day through that period of time. That's, that's a, that's a heavy traffic street. Um, and I believe someone mentioned that there could be as, as much as 15 or 1600 cars in the off season. Um, I think overall that I would reiterate what some folks have said. I walk the, the street quite a bit. Um, every once in a while, you'll see someone moving at a good speed. They do tend to slow down quite a bit around pedestrians. Uh, but by and large, I haven't seen a, a real traffic problem and when I reviewed the overall traffic study. Um, you know, frankly, I was, I was sort of pleased that I actually wouldn't have guessed that the average speed was. You know, 29.6 miles an hour during the very busiest times of the year, right? I would have thought it would, would average maybe, maybe up into the, uh, 30s. So we're, we're talking about a 4.6 mile per hour average over the speed limit. But a total pace speed range in that study of 25 to 35 miles an hour, which seems to me, walking the street. Again, several times a week and, and talking to other residents, that that. Um, you know, that is a fairly safe speed. Now, the road is narrow and it does cause people to slow down when they see pedestrians. Um, but what, you know, also, uh, I think I want to bring some light to is that. You know, a lot of us who live on that road feel as though, yes, every once in a while you see someone going too fast, as you will anywhere, right? Um, but the response and the measures taken in the plan seem to be overkill for the problem that is there. Um, I think from the data that I gathered tonight, that almost in three years, there were two speed related accidents. If you take the earlier data of 1.6 million cars traveled down, just taking the lower average, 1,500 average cars, right? Um, uh, during a three-year period, that. Um, uh, during a three-year period, that means you had about a one in a million chance of getting into a speed-related accident on Paradise Ave over the last three years. That, that isn't something that tells me we should all, you know, alarm and, and that we have a, a real massive problem, but I join the sentiment of the others saying, look, let's, let's try and curb, uh, speeders and let's, let's try and keep, uh, Paradise Ave a safe place for, uh, drivers and pedestrians. But it sounds to me that the data that I'm, I've just reviewed and been, and, uh, been given is it's, we're starting from a place where it is a pretty safe road, right? We don't have major problems. So it seems to me, and I think the other residents, that this is a, this is a pretty major response from a, you know, uh, speed bumps and flashing si- electronic signs and signage to a problem that is, is maybe a little bit more minor, or the data certainly suggests that, that, that the, that the problem is a little bit, uh, less than the solution being proposed. Um, one last little point, I, I thought too, it came up where the, uh, position of these speed humps would be. I noticed one, uh, propos- or in the proposal that it looked like one was going to be right after the already built-in kind of what I think, uh, speed dampening measure that does exist, which is the bridge at the very, very end of Paradise Ave between where we live and the beach, you know, that, the, the small bridge over, um, the river there. I know, you know, a lot of people that you really do have to slow down going over that bridge. So to put one of the speed humps like 20 feet from that or 30 feet from that, it looks like where one is going, seems to be like we're, we're spending money on a speed hump that we don't need because there's already a natural, uh, uh, hump in that bridge there too. So I wanted to mention that. I think overall, I'll just summarize by saying that most of the people that I've talked to, uh, residents, uh, which are, uh, down, um, towards that and, uh, towards, um, Second Beach and, um, and I say between Prospect and Second Beach, it seems to me overwhelmingly folks in that area, and I learned this from walking the streets so much and talking to people, are kind of overwhelmingly not in support of the, all of the measures that are, are, uh, being proposed here and implemented, that some, everyone wants safety on our street. There's no, no doubt about that. But it seems to me that the, the weight in the data suggests that what is being proposed is, is, is overkill. And I certainly am in agreement that the beauty of the, of the street should be, uh, considered here, not over safety, but, um, that it all should be considered. Um, it seems to me that we have, the data suggests we have a pretty safe street and that the measures and the proposals are a bit overkill. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, Richard Wallace, Richard, are you with us? I understand you're with us now.
Just needs to unmute.
Yeah, if you could just do star six, Richard, you'll unmute. Richard, if you can hear us, um, star six, it'll unmute you.
Doesn't the administrative person have the ability to take someone off mute?
She did.
I mean, we should be.
But he asked, he asked unmute as well, Dennis, because calling from his phone. She did unmute him.
Okay.
What's that name? Oh, he does get annoyed. He even gets an audio, Dennis. Once they're unmuted here, they get an audio message on their phone saying, press star six to unmute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have, um, we have a gentleman, Robert Fai, I believe it is, uh, that, um, did not submit a request, but I'm going to allow him a couple of minutes, uh, to make some short, brief comments. Robert, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can. Name and address, I'm going to.
Oh, yeah, Robert Fai, 603 Paradise Avenue. And, uh, gosh, I apologize, I can't recall seeing the announcements in the mail or the surveys, so, uh, I guess that must be on me, but the first inkling I had of this was when a 12-foot-high intersection sign appeared in front of my house for the very heavily traveled intersection, which is the little road that goes to the, uh, water plant there, which I'm sure that, uh, there's maybe two houses off of that. Now I get a 12-foot sign, which, you know, uh, if it has to be okay, I wouldn't, uh, I would propose that maybe it get moved up 20 feet so it's more towards my lot line instead of right in front of my front door. And it would still serve the purpose, you know, it would have been nice to, uh, to know about it, but it's, because it's just would be marking the, uh, the inters- the intersection is, you know, it's on a downhill and it would still be plainly visible that an intersection is coming up. And that intersection is literally where the, uh, the, the wa- the line that go, or that goes over to Nelson's Pond, which is hardly, uh, a massive, hardly a ma- heavily traveled intersection at all, uh, since there's.
But I agree with everything that's been said.
So, uh, but I, you know, support, uh, what everybody's been saying. Uh, I, I think even if you have an intersection sign as big and as tall and as massive as that is, uh, it's seems a tad overkill, uh, for the area. So, you know, that's all I can have to say.
Robert, thank you, um, thank you, your, uh, feedback is welcome. Um, I'm going to try one more time, Richard Walz. Richard Wallace, are you there? Richard, if you're there and you can hear us, you have to unmute yourself, star six. Okay, I know we have, um, I know we have Chief Cure, uh, on with us this evening. I'm just going to ask the chief if he'd like to make some comments, uh, before, uh, we, uh, discuss what we're going to do. Chief Cure?
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me?
We can hear you, chief.
First of all, I, I want to commend the council and the residents that have called in. I, I think everyone's mission here and their charge is just, we want people to be safe and travel, uh, in a safe way down a heavily traveled road during, particularly during the summertime. One that I did want to make, um, prior to my arrival in 2018, Parageneary did the study. So that was like a blind traffic count. So what the difference is between the All Traffic Solutions count and the pair count, car count and speeds is that it's blind. You don't know you're being recorded, it doesn't give you a feedback, there's no sign that shows your speed. The All Traffic Solutions sign, the recent, uh, traffic surveys, extended summaries that we did at the end of, uh, from July of this year and the one we just did recently, um, those are the feedback signs. So they, they warn the people to slow down, so. And that's where it comes in, that two-thirds of the people they see, they're not aware of their speed, they see the flashing lights, they slow down, it makes them aware of their, their speed. So that's the difference between the, the two traffic counts. And I, I would like to say also, just as a, in listening to everybody, the All Traffic Solutions, you know, obviously with a, with a summer of COVID, the, the traffic volume for a ra- average summer day for the, this past summer was 2,100 cars. With a full beach, with a full beach open, you can expect 3,000 cars per day. So I just wanted to add that stat as well. And, you know, what we're all looking for here is obviously, you know, something, the balance is something that's aesthetically pleasing versus, you know, improving the safety on that road that is highly traveled, um, through the summer months. And, you know, we're looking to, you know, it's not all about the accidents, we had two injury accidents, uh, from 15 to 18. And, you know, there is a big push for pedestrian safety and I, and especially with COVID, a lot more people are out there walking, as some of the call-ins actually stated. Um, this year on Rhode Island for two, 2020, we, we had a, we had a 100% increase in pedestrian fatalities in the state, went from 10 of 2019 up to a, a total of, uh, 19. Uh, Ride Dot is very concerned with the increase of pedestrian accidents, which includes bicycles. And we had one here last year on West Main Road. So bicycle, there's a lot of bicycles, a lot of people walking, we want people to be safe. What that balance is, is why we're all talking about this. And we just want something that's going to slow the traffic down. And obviously it's the people in the summertime where we're seeing those higher speeds, right? Because they're not familiar with the area, they're traveling, they're hurrying up to get to the beach, they're hurrying up to leave. Um, so we just want to make sure that we bring the proper signage and have a proper balance of keeping people safe in Paradise.
Thank you, chief. Um, I was thinking about something early this evening while we were talking and, um, it was brought up in regards to enforcement, chief. With COVID being around us last year, heavy during the summer, and I know that, uh, our, the law enforcement attitude across the state was, and correct me if I'm wrong, was to, um, limit stopping vehicles, um, to slow it down a little bit to, um, to lessen the potential contact of our first responders with coming in contact with somebody that had, uh, COVID. Would that be a fair statement, chief?
It would be a fair statement. It'd have to be a pretty significant violation, like a blatant stop sign or red light or an excessive speed. But I know one of the callers called in about the enforcement and visibility. We had several spot checks down there this summer. We had several enforcement campaigns down there this summer. They were very visible down there. Our speed signs were down there for a good three mon- uh, probably two and a half months on and off. Um, you know, it's all about, you know, speed, speed, speed enforcement and, and the obedience of the motor vehicle laws. It comes down to three things, right? It's, it's visibility, education and enforcement. And we just want people to be cognizant of their speeds, particularly in a, in a highly traveled area where you got a lot of pedestrian traffic. And Paradise is a beautiful road and, you know, as echoed by all the residents, and I echo those sentiments as well. And I, I think, you know, we just have to work on what is that balance? What is that balance of being aesthetically pleasing and, and making sure the road is as, as safe as possible as, as it can be and keeping that balance?
Thank you, chief. I'm going to entertain one more person. Um, you know, we do have council rules that say people have to contact us, but there's Eli Letterman who has a hand up. Eli, I'm going to give you a couple of minutes. Um, please get your pointer across.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Name and address, if you'd like.
Eli Letterman, 170 Paradise Avenue. Um, I, like Mr. Fai a moment ago, wasn't aware of how far along these proposals were. Um, it would have been helpful if there had been something in the, in the mailbox with, uh, details of the plan. Certainly I agree with everyone who opposes speed bumps, um, not just for, uh, the reasons mentioned, but because I think it also have a major impact on the quality of our lives, right? The residents would have to traverse these, uh, with great regularity. And someone mentioned much earlier, the enforcement, uh, possibility of deploying a speed cam, right? And having people get tickets in the mail. If there were a sign that alerted people to the presence of a speed cam, I assure you, it would have a dramatic impact. It is true that if, if a cruiser is on site, um, uh, it has an impact, but as someone said earlier, as soon as they go, people start speeding again. But a speed cam works all the time and I think word would get around the community very quickly, that there are no mistakes made, right? And I, I would, I would encourage, um, the consideration of that. And if it helps, I bet I could get a bunch of residents to help kick in to pay for it, right? I think it would pay a lot of bills for the town and would be a very, very effective enforcement mechanism.
Eli, that's, um, that's a fantastic idea, but historically, just over the years, every time we, um, set up, um, speed cams or, or heavy speed enforcement on roads, uh, majority of the violations were the people that were living on the road.
That's fine, that's fine. I, I, I'd like to see that happen.
All right.
And I, and I bet every resident would agree. I bet everyone in Paradise Avenue would, would raise their hand and take that hit.
All right, thank you, Eli, appreciate you weighing in.
Thank you very much.
Um, to me, I'm just going to throw this on the table for my colleagues, um, I think it's obvious tonight that, um, we have to revisit this. I think, uh, what I'd like to do tonight is, um, I'll make it in the form of a motion that we charge, uh, the town administrator and, uh, town engineer and our police chief with, uh, maybe orchestrating another meeting with the residents that live in the area and let them, uh, vet this out in detail and see if we can come back with a compromise. And I think, uh, it's extremely important that we do reach a compromise. And I'll tell you, um, my only concern, which what bothers me is, is that, you know, this study was asked for, the study was voted on by the council, this study was implemented by the council and it's not just for the residents of Paradise Avenue, it's for the residents of the entire town, every people coming into the town. Um, so I wondered if there's any, uh, I haven't been able to, uh, speak with, um, any legal counsel, but, um, if my only concern would be, are we assuming any liability by not enacting this? I don't believe we are, but I'm not an attorney. Our, our council listener has recused himself from this, uh, because of a conflict. And I'm going to ask Mr. Brown just to look into that too. Uh, maybe, uh, Marissa or somebody can look into that, ask that question. I think it's a fair question asked, by us not doing this, are we assuming any liabilities when we guys do this? But, uh, I don't believe we are, but again, I'm not an attorney. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we charge Mr. Brown and our town engineer and our police chief with, um, maybe orchestrating another, um, meeting with the residents in the area and get as much feedback as we can.
Second.
Have a second, any conversation? Council Toronto?
You're muted.
Unmuted.
Sorry about that. Um, first I want to also thank all the people who, uh, inquired on this and, uh, took the time to meet with us tonight because that's so important. And Bob, I agree with you, I think, uh, we need to have another meeting for the people to talk about their requests for the area. We always defer to the people in the area in a lot of ways to have, you know, a lot of say in what happens in their backyard. I think we also got to take in consideration, you know, when we're putting up these signs, just because the plan says put it here, doesn't necessarily mean it needs to go there. Putting the sign right in front of his front door versus maybe moving it down a little bit, put it on the property line, seems like common sense to me. So hopefully we can take some of that into consideration when we do it. And I would like to try a few different things to see what might work in that area. I know that when we did Forest Ave or we did Olive, and we put up those blinking signs to see if we could slow traffic down a little bit. So I've heard from a number of folks and saying, hey, let's try a few different things. You know, I was an advocate of actually putting speeding in, in Middletown and taking out an ad in the paper saying, we will have a speed check on Paradise Ave Saturday from 10 to 12 o'clock during the day. So all the residents be aware, we are putting us, you know, so that they need to know, hey, we got a speed trap there, but maybe that car being there for the day will assist the beach traffic that's coming down and, and causing a lot of this stuff, you know, all the speeding. Because speeding is the issue that we're mostly worried about here. Sharing the road with the bikes, hey, that's important, but speeding is the issue that we're, we're talking about here. So I'd like to see less share the bo- share the road with bikes in signs that say, stop speeding, and maybe a few stop littering along the way would be nice too. So just, you know, that's just a couple of things that I wanted to, to say, and I think we should put a mailer in everyone's mailbox. Not everyone can, you know, get access to the website or get access to the paper. I think I'd like to see us put a flyer in each of the residents' mailboxes identifying the date, because it sounds like the process went pretty good. Got to the recommendation of the council, but it sounds like there was a meeting that was missed after that. So I think, uh, again, let's notify everyone, make sure the feedback, and I'm sure the folks that are on the call today, as soon as they know, will start notifying their, their residents as well, their, their neighbors. So thank you again for everyone calling in and, uh, look forward to hearing about the results.
Vice President?
Excuse me, thank you, Bob. So I love it.
So I love it, Councilor Toronto, you're going to get the Woods of the Owl plug in there, you know, with the litter, and that's great. Uh, having said that, um, you know, we talk about enforcement and, you know, I, I get it that, you know, a car can, a police car is there for a while and then it loses its effect. Well, I'll tell you, I travel out of town every day and, uh, or six days a week roughly, and, um, you know, Quaker Hill, where the Portsmouth Police Department is and Fire Department, when you go down that hill, you know that you should be going, or you better be going 25, because there is constant enforcement there. Even when they're not there, it has an effect. So, um, I think that, that, that certainly should be looked at, especially in the, in the, in the seasonality of the beach. Um, that's when, I know years back, they did that. Uh, somebody said Jay Peckham was right there, or they were constantly there, the, the road to the quarry. Um, so I think that's, that, that could certainly happen or needs to happen. And I, I look, everyone says, look, there's only so many resources, I, I get it, but, you know, um, if we're going to take steps towards this, then let's take steps towards it, and let's take the right steps and, and see what works. Um, I'm not a big signage person, I'm just not. I can't imagine, I don't know what the criteria is for the scenic, uh, roadway board, and I'm glad they had input, it's, it's important, because it's a designated scenic roadway. Um, I can't imagine that they would want or say, hey, yeah, we're in favor of 12-foot-high signs that are fluorescent. That's not very scenic to me. Um, so I, I did like Chris Greenman's, uh, thoughts and ideas about if we're going to put, share the, share the road with bike signs and, and, and try and, uh, implement that effect, I think it's important that, um, I like the idea of maybe trying, like Newport did with, uh, paint it on the roadway. Um, I don't know, just, just some thoughts, but, um, I just, at the end of the day, uh, I'd like to, my own personal opinion is, um, you know, when you look at the average speeds right now, it's not really that bad. Um, there's going to be some anomalies, we, we've seen that in the report, but that's on every street, um, or most streets, um, with, with that length and that kind of straightaway going on. I think the speed pumps, speed humps could be a problem for emergency vehicles, as some of the residents stated. And at the end of the day, I think that, uh, you know, um, we're going to do what the residents want, and that's the way it should be. If they don't want it, they shouldn't get it. And that majority typically rules and, and, but we do, at the same time, have to make sure that, um, um, we come to a, a good compromise for safety purposes and aesthetic purposes. So, but I, Bob, I agree, that meeting needs to happen. And I'd like to know when it is, because I'd like to attend.
Councilor Santos?
You're muted. All right, now I've done it. I think everybody will agree, who has spoken, who has listened, Middletown has changed a great deal. Maybe for the good, maybe not. Signs, I have a lot to say about signs, but I won't. I live on a street where the speed limit is 15 miles per hour. Many times do you think that people are doing 15? No, I think they read it backwards. They're doing 51, especially going to work or coming home or late at night leaving Newport. I would also like to attend this meeting because I'm a little surprised that the residents on Paradise Avenue were not aware of the speed bumps. Now Forest Avenue, speed bumps were installed there first time, they didn't work out well. They were installed to get reinstalled. Now to answer Mr. Welch's question, has anybody from Forest Avenue made comments on the speed bumps? I heard today from one resident, they are sinking. Now, I have not gone that way, Mr. Welch, um, but I think where the residents do not want the speed bumps, I don't think we should put them in. They are creating a problem. Will they be put in correctly? I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a, um, construction worker, but I think that we should listen to the residents. Signs, do people read them? I don't know, I don't think so. One thing I'd like to say, that many years ago, a former chief of police, Ms. Bob Gibson, used to put various cruises that were not being used in various places in town with somebody in it, not a live person. All right, you know what I'm getting at? And it worked, so it worked. People, and they stayed, the car stayed there for quite a few hours, and it slowed the people down. People are in such a hurry nowadays, they don't read the signs. It may say 25, they're doing 52, may say 15, they're doing 51. Beach season is a bad, bad time. Not everybody is speeding. But I'll tell you what, I left Prospect Avenue the other day, and I couldn't believe, I had pulled out onto Paradise, and this car came out of nowhere, he must have been going, where he was going, heaven only knows. But we do need another meeting, and I personally would like to attend this meeting, I'd like to hear what's going on, what the residents have to say. But residents should be notified. We have a newsletter that goes out, can they not be notified through that? I don't know where and how many the newsletter gets, goes out to. I'd like to have the information put on the news, put in the newsletter so that everybody gets the information. Not everybody has a computer, we've got to realize that. So some other form of communication has to be done, the newsletter is one of them. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Councilor Santos. Okay, any other conversation? The motion's been seconded. Councilor Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, um, I too am in favor, if there's going to have to be some signage, that the paint, I think, works very well, very easy to see and, and, uh, way less obtrusive. Um, I like the idea of the speed cam, I will do some research on that, because I think that is, uh, has some potential. Um, I question putting flyers in mailboxes only because suppose somebody owns a house but doesn't live there? Um, maybe we need to also back that up by ensuring that the owner is notified, I don't, I don't know how we do that, but mailing it as opposed to just sticking it in the mailbox. And lastly, Mrs. Santos, um, I know what you're saying about putting the, the dummy in the car, uh, there's a problem with that though, because if someone drives by and sees a public service vehicle with someone in it, they may mistake it for, you know, going to it for help, and, uh, so that's why I don't think we're supposed to do that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other conversation? Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded. All in favor? Aye. Both? Okay, thank you. Vice President?
Well, I just want to, I want to make sure for the, for clarity purposes, the folks that are on, um, how the, how this meeting's going to be communicated, the date and time.
Mr. Brown is charged with doing that, with the town engineer and the police chief, I think three of them can handle it. I hope they can handle it. I'm sure they can handle it.
Mr. President?
Councilor Santos?
And will the council be notified of this meeting?
I'm sure there'll be 100 emails flying around about it.
Thank you.
Okay. And it seems like Paradise Avenue has a pretty good email, uh, communication line down there, and, um, I'm sure they'll work on it, and I'm sure the ones that do will notify the neighbors in the areas that don't. So I'm sure the word will get out, and I'm sure between the police chief, our town administrator and our town engineer, um, give them ample time, let's get it out there, let's vet this, and let's, uh, let's come to a, a reasonable, um, resolution to this. Okay, so we had, uh, the motions been passed. Mr. Vice President?
Okay, I want to thank everybody, and a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I, I also want to thank everybody, thank you for calling in tonight, good feedback. We have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.